May we have your attention? Would you take your seats, please, for the program is ready to start? Thank you.
Good evening, welcome to you all. My name is Jane Waddick. I'm the president of the American Association of University Women, North Palm Beach County Branch, and we're welcoming you to the 2024 Meet the Candidates Night. Would you please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So the American Association of University Women once again is proud to host the Meet the Candidates Night. The Northern Palm Beach County Branch of AAUW was started in North Palm Beach over sixty years ago. The branch helped to open the North Palm Beach Library, which is now over fifty years old. The Thelma O'Burt Room, which many of you probably use downstairs at the library, was named after one of our original AAUW founders. On most Thursdays, most Thursday evenings, most, I'm sorry, most third Mondays of the month, we meet in the O'Burt Room. And the AAUW hostesses have badges here this evening. They're going to help you with anything you need. Before our candidate coordinator starts the meeting, I want to introduce you to the North Palm Beach Village Clerk, Jessica Green, who will tell you about the election process. Jessica?
Good evening, welcome to the Village of North Palm Beach Meet the Candidates Event. My name is Jessica Green, and it is my privilege to serve as your village clerk. I want to thank Judy Pierman and Ms. Waddick for sponsoring, and the AAUW, American Association of University Women, for sponsoring and hosting this Meet the Candidates event. Our village municipal election will be held Tuesday, March 19, and it is in conjunction with the presidential preference primary. The polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We currently have one seat on the village council going to the election, which is Group Three. The qualified candidates in Group Three are William Luzriaga and Orlando Puyol. Sample ballots and information regarding early voting, locations and vote by mail information have been provided over there on the table. Vote by mail ballots are only available through the Palm Beach County Supervisor of Elections Office and cannot be dropped off at polling locations on Election Day. So vote by mail ballots are only accepted at one of the four counties' early voting locations, the Supervisor of Elections' main office, or one of their branch offices. The deadline to drop off a vote by mail ballot is Election Day by 7:00 p.m. at the Supervisor of Elections' main office. If you choose to vote in person, you must vote in the precinct where you live, and in that precinct's designated polling location, you will need to bring a current valid photo identification with a signature. Approved forms of ID are listed on the Florida Division of Elections website. If you're not sure where to vote, you can find out by calling the clerk's office, or going online at the Supervisor of Elections office, also by checking your voter's registration card. Lastly, I want to remind our candidates and citizens that Florida statutes prohibits candidates from soliciting or accepting contributions in a building owned by a government entity, which includes the building we're in tonight. Thank you, candidates, for your willingness to serve the Village of North Palm Beach.
And now, the introductions in program format will be given by the AAUW candidate coordinator, Judy M. Pierman. Judy?
Thank you, Jessica and Jane. Before we start, I want to recognize some of our community leaders. Our village mayor, Susan Tiedemann Bechel. Our village manager, Chuck Huff. Our council member, Karen Marcus. And we want to thank all of the village staff for their help in setting up tonight's program. The format of the program is in two parts. You may have seen all the refreshments back there. That's for you really to get acquainted with your candidates. But it's formal and informal, and this was agreed by the candidates. Written questions will be accepted, and time permitting, will be answered. Each candidate will be introduced, given three to five minutes to introduce himself, and I say "himself" because it's only males that we have on candidates, and the reasons for their running for council. After introductions, written questions will be accepted, and time permitting, they will be answered. The candidates will take written questions with one to three-minute responses. And we have timekeepers. Show your time cards if you've got, yes. So the last part will be for the candidates and the audience to have individual informal conversations over refreshments provided by our AAUW hostesses. Tonight, we're here to hear from the candidates running in Group Three, but because of the circumstances of no opponents in One, Four, and Five, it was requested that they be given three minutes to introduce themselves, and you can further question them over refreshments after the meeting. Congratulations to the winners of One, Four, and Five. Is it One? Yes, One, Four, and Five. Deborah Circe, I don't believe, she has a class she has to teach tonight, so she is not here, but she was unopposed. Kristin Garrison. Just stand up and let them see who you are, Kristin. She is one of your, will be one of your new council people. And Lisa Interlandi. So we are going to give each one of them three minutes for you to get to know them. And since Deborah is not going to be here, we will start alphabetically with Kristin Garrison for three minutes at the podium.
Thank you so much for doing this. This is wonderful. My name is Kristin Garrison. I've been a resident of North Palm Beach with my husband, Ed, for just about thirty years. I'm very passionate about this wonderful place that we live in. Professionally, I'm an urban planner by profession and by education. I have my master's degree in urban planning. I'm going to tell you just a couple of things about my professional background, because it's going to influence the lens through which I look at issues that come before the council. I started off my career in Palm Beach County as Director of the county's Planning, Zoning, and Building Department. I then had a stint at the Water Management District, where I did environmental planning, including water supply planning. So I got a nice glimpse at the environmental issues that are unique to our beautiful South Florida. After that, I had a job like Chuck's. I was a city manager. And so I learned a lot about how local governments work from that perspective. And more recently, and another passion of mine, is that I'm planning and intergovernmental director for the school district of Palm Beach County, and I've done that for a couple of decades now. Having been in local government and in service my entire profession, I understand that cities like our villages, like ours, towns, cities do not work unless they have an incredibly effective and passionate staff, and we have that here in North Palm Beach, bar none. I mean, I know all of the city managers in Palm Beach County by virtue of what I do, and there are a lot of good ones, but we have one of the best, and he's assembled a great team. So with that, nice to meet everyone.
In Group Five, we have Lisa Interlandi.
Thank you, everyone. I'm so excited to be joining the council, and I want to thank the American Association of University Women for hosting this event, and my fourth-grade teacher, inspirational, Ms. Pierman. Yes, I was born and raised in North Palm Beach. I grew up here. My father, a surgeon, built the lot, bought the lot over on Lakeside Circle in 1963, and raised a family there. We all grew up there, swimming at the country club, you know, doing gymnastics at the country club, riding our bikes at the Twin City Mall, and just doing all those types of things. I went to the Benjamin School, that's where I had Ms. Pierman as my teacher, and then I went to Palm Beach Gardens High School. I went to University of Florida, if there's any Gators. Woo! I also went to FSU for law school, so, woo, yeah, go Noles! After law school, I came back home to Palm Beach County with my husband, who is also from here. We moved to North Palm Beach, and I started working for the Everglades Law Center, which is a not-for-profit public interest law firm. We do all environmental public interest law. We do things like working on Everglades restoration and also protecting our environment here throughout South Florida. We do land use issues, and we work on protecting the Lake Worth Lagoon. So that's one of my passions, and that's one of the passions that I definitely want to bring to the council. Here for North Palm Beach, I was on the REC Advisory Board. I also served on the ADHOC Advisory Committee, which developed regulations to address the proliferation of very large-scale homes that were somewhat changing the character of our community. We developed rules for that that were ultimately adopted by the council, and currently I'm the vice chair of the Environmental Committee for another week or two until I move up on to the council. So I've also had the opportunity to collaborate with a lot of really esteemed residents and people here in North Palm Beach. Ms. Karen Marcus, our former North Palm Beach Council member and county commissioner on sustainable Palm Beach County, where we are both on the board. I also am on the board of the Everglades Coalition and Kids for Clean Water, which is a new organization that we're starting to help kids become better advocates for the environment. So I ran for North Palm Beach Council, oh, I'm sorry, I'm supposed to stop, but let me just say really quick that I ran for North Palm Beach Council just because I really love this community, I want to protect the character of the community. I know we're facing so many issues right now, and protecting our village charm and character is just one of the really most important things to me. So thank you all.
North Palm Beach, you have your two new council members that will be sworn in on Thursday, the second Thursday of this next month. And also, we make history at that time, because at that time, we will have five female council members. Until we have the election. And so I'm going to introduce you to the candidates that you will be, for whom you will be voting. You have two, you've already been introduced to them, William Luzriaga and Orlando Puyol. And Mr. Luzriaga will go first.
Thank you so much. Well, I must say, Mr. Puyol, we have a challenge with the ladies. All right, okay, here we go. So who is Dr. William Luzriaga? Jennifer, would you stand out, please? I am Dr. William Luzriaga. The lady that you see there, a native village in North Palm Beach, born and raised, captured my heart thirty-five years ago. We have been married for thirty-three years now. As a village resident over thirty-plus years, I can humbly state that my family represents what the village in North Palm Beach is all about, with the values, traditions, and belief. A father, a loving mother, each with her doctors, adult children with graduate degrees in law, medicine, and leadership. I am a college professor of business in Spanish language, and I continue touching life with my wonderful students. I knew back then that in our country, the United States of America, all things are possible with academia and career path and education. Therefore, I have a bachelor's degree in management from Palm Beach University, a master in educational leadership from Palm Beach University, and a second master's in Spanish language for Nova Southeastern University, and I didn't stop. I have a doctoral degree in business and leadership from Nova Southeastern University as well. Wow, so many years of school, but I did it. Now, I've been asked this question many, 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 many times. Why did I decide to run for council? Well, I have two reasons why. The first one is that during my thirty years living in our village, I saw how much we have preserving conservative ways of living, and we have kept a village as a village. A big concern among is that now developers want to put their hands on it in our conservative village, and rapidly bill, 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 while taking into consideration our village culture. And the second thing, another concern among is that in the west, west, west side of the village in North Palm Beach where I live in, it has been underrepresented. Our last representation from that part where I live in the council board was in 2010 to 2012, over a decade ago. If my opponent gets elected, we will have all representation in the council board for only the inside of our village. As a college professor of business and leadership, research has proven that from every area of the village, it is very healthy to have in every side a representation. Therefore, healthy in which decisions can be made, especially for the Twin City Mall, an issue that is coming ahead of us. So we need to have a great mixture when it comes to being in the board council. And have a little more time. I do, yes, yes. The biggest issue facing the council is the decision that made about the Twin City Mall, and making sure that the village residents are pleased with the council decision. What is a happy wife, happy life, so we have to keep our residents happy. Through the thirty-plus years living in the village, I have volunteered directly and indirectly in different ways throughout the village, have participated in attending all the committees, in council committees regularly. In addition, have throughout this journey, powerful leaders have encouraged me to run for council because they believe that Dr. William Luzriaga can effectively and efficiently replace the seat of our major mal retirement president, Dr. Darryl Aldery. Thank you very much.
And our second candidate is Orlando Puyol.
Good evening. Let me first introduce myself. Obviously, I'm Orlando Puyol. I was born in Cuba, immigrated here to the United States in 1960, where I became an American and to take advantage of all the great things this country has to offer. My education comes via the University of Florida, where I received a bachelor in science and civil engineering. I hold licenses as professional engineer, as well as a certified general contractor and a director of early childhood education. I married my wife, Susie, of forty-eight years in 1976. We have three children, as well as eight grandchildren. When we moved into the village of North Palm Beach in 1985, we lived on Lighthouse Drive, and we enjoyed the traffic of Lighthouse Drive waving at everybody as you passed by. It made us feel very comfortable coming from Miami. After the kids moved on, Susie and I decided to move over to Eptide to enjoy the water and all of the fun activities that the village of North Palm Beach has to offer. My wife and I are owners of a couple of businesses. One is a construction and home remodeling business called Puyol Enterprise. The second one is a school called Gardens Learning Center. We've operated it for thirty-four years, and we have changed a lot of diapers and taken care of a lot of kids, but it has been very fulfilling. I have volunteered throughout the forty-some-odd years that we've lived in the village, in just about every capacity, starting off by coaching, soccer, softball, baseball, basketball, as well as, Ms. Pierman elected me to the board of, it used to be called the Planning Commission, now it's the Planning, Zoning, and Adjustment Board. I was the chairman of that commission for five years, as well as I currently sit on the golf advisory board for the last three years. My experience in guiding the village, I believe, is going to be paramount, because the first thing we've got to tackle is the master plan. We adopted the master plan in 2016, and we need to adhere to the master plan. We cannot deviate from the heights of the buildings and the density that you, the residents of this village, have approved. Secondly, since we have a small tax base, because we are a small community, we have to be very frugal with our money. We cannot continue to ask the taxpayers for more money in order to fund projects that may or may not be necessary. As the village continues to grow, there's areas that need attention. One is the firefighters, the police department, and the paramedics. We need to stay safe in this community as it grows, so it's very important for us to understand where our tax dollars need to go. I think that my experience in life and also as a business owner, working with the village departments, it's going to be paramount. As a business owner, I can work with finance. As a contractor and an engineer, I can work with Public Works. As a complete advocate of sports, I can work with the Recreation Department. I think that those activities are paramount in working with the residents of North Palm Beach. Now, what is the crown jewel, in my estimation, of the village of North Palm Beach? It's the country club. The country club, it's a beautiful location. Unfortunately, it's not used by every village resident, so it's very important that the country club support itself. We cannot ask the taxpayers to take money out of the public fund to support that project. That needs to support itself, however it needs to work. Lastly, I'd like to talk about the Lighthouse Bridge that I was so fond of. In 2018, the Lighthouse Bridge was deemed by the Florida Department of Transportation as physically not capable of continuing its use. We put money in to shore it up. However, that only lasted five to eight years. We're already into that period of time when we need to take a close look at what's going on. My family experienced a horror story in Miami Beach Surfside when we lost our, my wife's sister, sorry. And I'm telling you, you've got to act now before something happens. And I'll end with this. My candidacy has been endorsed by the Firefighters Local 2928, the Palm Beach County Police Benevolent Association, the Board of Realtors of Palm Beach County, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, and the Hispanic Vote. Vote Puyol on March 19. Thank you very much.
We have to take just a break while he changes the film.
Wonderful. Please, Miss Pierman, if you'd mind, if we repeat the questions so the audience can capture the greater understanding for this quite important question. Go ahead, can you repeat it for us?
I think I almost forgot what it was. Got so many cards here.
It's about, we are divided, yeah.
Yes, the village being divided. How would you unite the village?
Right, right, right. Well, this topic is a passion of mine, and I'll tell you why. Because I've been going door-to-door campaigning, and this is something that the village residents are very concerned about. Why? Because remember, we are a village that generation to generations have been giving their homes like our home. However, new people, new families that go aboard, and sometimes it's very difficult to integrate with the new culture that we have. However, I think that through effective communication, there's something that if I get elected in the council, I will work very much by promoting engagement through the village resident within the village, and focuses on what you, as part of the development. This division have lead to, we are outsourcing now coaches that they come from Jupiter Palm Beach Gardens to come to the gardens. But then, Dr. Ellis, I'm going to stop because I'm going to promote, and what if I have to door-to-door to promote these parents to volunteer like they used to be in the year 2001, 2003, when my kids were small, that parents, they volunteer as they did as well. Thank you very much.
This person wants to know, when does the Farmer's Table contract end? And wants to know about the Farmer's Table.
Okay, so Farmer's Table. They were great when they first came here, but nobody likes them anymore. As a golfer, I can tell you, I am very upset that they don't cater to golfers at all. So we go in down the street to the draft house. But nevertheless, I will tell you that I heard two things, and we can only find out from the village manager. There's a five-year, three-five-year leases, and there's a six-month separation, and I don't know whether that happened three months ago, or it's going to happen in the middle of this coming year. So I do not vote to bring him back. I think we need somebody that's more friendly to the community and has a more variety of foods to eat. Thank you.
Well, I'm sorry, Jennifer, I have to say this. Jennifer does not like it. Happy wife, happy life. Yes. She would try it because they have healthy, wonderful, they are absolutely. However, I think that we wanted to see something differently there. It's coming up, but we have to have patience. We have to have patience because it's a contract one, so, they have so many years, right? But for sure, I know that the whole village of North Palm Beach residents would like to see something different, like a french fries and a nice hamburger, right? Everybody's checking their hand, yes, yes, and a nice shake, etc. So it's coming up, so no worries. It will be here, time that you know. Thank you.
This person wants to know, how do you feel about improving bikeways, paths around the village, particularly US One and Lighthouse Road, to make pedestrian access safer?
Well, as a golf cart enthusiast, and I drive my golf cart up and down US One all the time, for those of you that follow me and give me the number-one sign, I can give you the number-thump sign, too. I've ridden bicycles all through the village. I understand that as we redevelop the Lighthouse Bridge, there's going to be bike paths on both sides and expanded sidewalks. I think it's very important, we're all a very healthy, conscious community, and walking, bike riding is very important to our health. Thank you.
We are a community outdoors a hundred percent. We like to bike, we like to walk, I like to hike, and we hike around the city. So yes, absolutely, we need to have those access and make it better. However, we need to keep in mind that we need to keep the village as a village. So we would not kind of want to change anything drastically, but yes, absolutely, we need to, we need to change in that way. We'd be wonderful because we'd be safe as well, and Mr. Puyol can drive his golf cart, too, right pop? Yeah, and I can bike, too. In the right direction, we are being safe. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Traffic question. New development. Has there been a study of all proposed projects that you know of? The cumulative traffic count per day, etc.?
Well, if the question relates to the Twin City project, from the best understanding I have, is that the traffic study is ten years old. Obviously, if you drive up and down US One or North Lake, you know that it's up to capacity. We cannot even consider having Twin City developed without some serious discussion about how the traffic is going to about how the traffic is going to move. Remember, in Lake Park, you've got an model as 220. Where are those people coming? You have Yacht Club Drive project. Where are those people going? We need to seriously study, and we've not, we've not collected impact fees for years from these developers. These people have to give us millions of dollars to develop the infrastructure necessary to bring in this development. Thank you.
That pivot to that is very, very important to keep in mind that it is inevitable. If you want to have a Twin City mall, like, of course, it's not going to be too high, and the traffic is going to cohere and spend a little more. However, I have the confidence for the staff, the village managers, and the whole staff in the village council, the board, that will be at the time that they will make the right decision to keep us safe in traffic, not being a too much problem in the village. Thank you.
This person wants to know, why lower the speed on US-1? And they said for golf carts?
Well, I apologize that in my flyer, I was misquoted by saying that I wanted to lower the speed. The speed is slow enough. 35 miles an hour is slow enough. But when the bridge at the Parker, the Parker Bridge, when that comes down, it's an Indy 500. Forget about 35 miles an hour. These guys are going 50. That's why we need more police to enforce the 35 mile an hour speed zone. Someone is going to get hurt, and it's not going to be me and my golf cart because I'm off to the side. But it's the people that are in a rush to get to nowhere. Thank you.
Please, you repeat the question because I wanted to mention, besides, I wanted to do it here.
The speed on US-1. Why reduce it?
Say it again. The speed on US-1?
The speed on US-1. Why reduce it? And they wanted to know if it was for golf carts.
Right, right. Well, Mr. Poyorkin, you have a golf cart. Oh, boy, I want to have one too. Well, it's very important against to keep the speed in a limited. And one thing that I agree is that we need to put more police enforcement as the speed is a problem pretty much for now. Many golf carts embrace my heart very much when I go around the village and I see, I'm so sorry, I see these teenagers, 14, 13, driving in a speed that is not supposed to be going in places that are not supposed to be going. And absolutely, police enforcement growing, it is a big plus for the village.
Dr. Ellis, just stay there now. Ask the next question. You can have it first. Why does North Palm Beach have so many baseball fields but no soccer fields?
Oh, I like soccer. Yes. Well, one of the things that I would say that due to our culture, our culture, my kids growing up here in, what, Megan, Jonathan, Samantha, here, 2001, 2002, baseball was one of the main sports, actually, our American sport, really. And through the years, soccer have really developed and advanced a little bit more. So nowadays, we are 2024, and we have grown, the sport have grown tremendously. Especially, we do a scholarship for students going to different universities. I see, no worries, I see that long promotion, building some soccer fields as well, and as well as some pickleball. Pickleball as well. So it is coming, it is coming. And now the love of the soccer, the soccer teams, fans that will be volunteer coaches. And now we're not going to be outsourcing, right? It's going to be inside the house. It's going to help us pretty much to promote a soccer, soccer team in the village of North Palm Beach. Thank you.
Well, I will explain my version of baseball fields. We've really only had the Osborne Park. And there's one field there that I played softball, and we coached Little League. And we do have another little field in the back. We used to have a field at Angler's Park that doesn't exist anymore. Right here at the community center, we have a multi-purpose field. Remember, the village is not all that large. So we have four baseball fields, and we also have soccer fields in the opposite direction. Keep in mind that when you only have one field to work with, it has to be multi-use. So if we would like to have more baseball fields or more softball, soccer fields, it's not something that's going to be totally available to us because we're landlocked, guys. We need to use what we have the most efficient way possible. And this multi-purpose field, the way we turn it around in opposite directions, it is phenomenal. I would like to see artificial surface, which would be a lot more surviving than the grass. Thank you.
This is one that have you both, somebody had heard that a statement was made about wanting the village to be like New York City. And what is your comment on that?
Well, two years ago, when I ran for the village council, there was a lot of things that were said about me that weren't true. And I think that one was one that came from, because I have never in my life considered the village of North Palm Beach to be New York. I don't like living in New York. I do like vacationing there, but I could not stand the traffic and how those people go. So please get to understand. I have lived here since 1985. I have walked the village. I have ridden my golf cart and my bicycle. And I want this to be a small community, the way it is. But we do have to develop it. We do need the tax base to grow, guys. So we need something to happen on Yacht Club Drive and something to happen at Twin City. But that does not reflect it to be New York City. So thank you.
Well, I'm going to be honest to say that New York City is in my heart because I went there for high school for three years. Even though, when I came here, you remember, I went to college and I met Jennifer. And no worries, no worries. It's not going to be a New York City in the village of North Palm Beach. Our village culture does not allow and does not permit to grow as much rapidly than New York City did, New York City did. So that's one of the reasons it's very important to make the right decision for a council board when it comes to that because you do not want to grow, 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 grow. Remember, you're talking about the garden. You start planting trees, you forget about the garden, you become a forest. That's the same concept. But no worries, this will not be New York. We always will reach a, we set our village culture. Thank you.
This person wants to know how you would improve the attendance, attendance to the village council meetings?
Well, I got to tell you, guys, it's a little disappointing that out of 13,000 residents in this village, we've got maybe 100 people here to see what's going to happen in the next two years. I've been trying to engage the younger kids, the 30-year-olds, 40-year-olds. And I glad, I see some of you here. You're the legacy of this village. We need to bring you in. You guys need to be informed. You need to know what's going on. We cannot give this thing to you without you understanding how it works. I think it's very important that the youth of our society get involved in not only politics, but also in what the village council does. Attending the village council meetings, being informed, is going to help you make a better decision.
I have the solution. I promise. I am a great believer that you have to adopt this solution in another problem. You have a problem because, yes, many residents, village residents attended, but I don't blame them. People were busy, were busy in many other things. However, 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 communication is one of the key of success. I am proposing, and I want to propose, to have a text system type where each village resident that are willing to get into that system will get notification of when the meetings are, when it's going to be, the time it's going to be. And that effectively, little by little, will increase the attendance of the village residents. Thank you.
Again with US-1. Are you in favor of reducing the US-1 highway to two lanes, as is proposed?
Well, as I said earlier, the traffic on US-1 already is very congested. Having the Yacht Club Drive project and the Twin City project and the addition of traffic makes no sense to reduce that road. Besides that, it's going to cost... I attended the meeting when the Department of Transportation said it was going to be a free reduction. Nothing is free. I remember the discussion. It's going to cost us about $3 million. And I got to tell you, if we're going to put out $3 million to inconvenience ourselves, we need to get some therapy quickly.
Well, let's think about it. If we don't reduce it, where the bikes are going to go? And the golf carts are going to go? So we need a space, right? So yes, we need to reduce it so we can get a space for the bikes, space for the golf carts, and many other things as well. Besides, it's very, very important. However, remember that we need to keep it as a village. With some nice little flowers on the side so we don't keep that characteristic of being a village and not a city. So like that, remember, we need a space for those bikes, for those golf carts, for those walkers, for those runners, etc. So absolutely, I think that would be a big plus for the village of North Palm Beach. Thank you.
This person wants to know, says some people are under the impression that the North Palm Beach Country Club is private. How would you change that perception?
Well, unfortunately, not everybody is going to take part in the country club. In the almost 40 years that we've lived here, I think I've participated more in the country club in the last seven years than I did in the first 33 years. And that's simply because the activities are not for kids. The activities are not for the youth. The youth drives more towards the community center, drives more towards Osborne Park. Now, I don't know about you guys, but it's expensive to go over there. Golf is not cheap. You know, one week in a golf activity was like $500. That's like a whole summer for a child, if you can even afford that. So that's a really tough question. I will tell you that it has a big place in our community. I think the swimming pool needs to be more parks and recreation. But tennis, pickleball in the future, and golf, and a great dining will go very well for the community. Thank you.
We have a commercial announcement.
Wonderful.
Ready? Okay.
Will you repeat the question, please?
Repeat the question. Let me see. Some people are under the impression that the North Palm Beach Country Club is private. How would you change that perspective?
Yeah, I have the solution. I have the solution. I promise, I promise. Okay, here we go. It's very important, but first of all, the restaurant have to go. We have to, you know, have another restaurant there. And the best important thing is to focus in bringing outside communities to activities to the country club. It is very important to have the youth for other Palm Beach charities, Jupiter, to experience what our wonderful golf can offer. If they don't have it, we can actually work out some type of scholarship that we can put together. But it's very important to make the community aware that we are not, we are not private, but we are open to the public. And by promoting the youth, promoting kids to go into the pool, bringing another teams, competition, golf competitions, that will all give the idea to the whole community outside the village of North Palm Beach that we are not private, that we are welcome to the public with open arms. Thank you.
I have one more card, and then we will get ready for the closing comments. But the card is one I think that is important and it's lengthy. So it says, "The North Palm Beach Environmental Committee has been busy working on shade tree studies, lakeside park, beach erosion projects, recycling initiatives, opening a community garden, educational speaker series, and the list goes on. How do you plan to support the community's environmental concerns?"
Well, yesterday, I attended the Waterway Board. I've been working with the residents of 12 Oaks to try to clear up some problems that they're having in the lagoon with discharge from some of the vessels there. There was a lot of information that came out of there about a living seashore. Listen, I think that the environment is so important. The canal behind my house is being dredged. The toxicity of the drainage coming off of US-1 into that canal is making the mud so toxic that when the crane threw the mud onto the barge and it landed on my boat, it was burning the Jelco off the boat. I am telling you, we have to be serious and impactful on how we're going to work with the environment to save it for the future. Not only for us, but for the kids. Thank you.
I think it's very important to preserve that environment. And I think the village of North Palm Beach residents, we are welcome to help, we're welcome to help. However, I am against artificial turf and things like that. We need to make sure, yes, of course, you can put in your backyard, but too much artificial things, you have to be careful. And I have been in the environmental committee where Karen Marcus, Lisa was there. And they're doing a fantastic job. And I know the village of North Palm Beach were all together trying to support these events that we have, these trees, this grass, and make the village always look like a village. Thank you.
I think this is the first time we've ever gone through all the cards. I hope that yours, yours wasn't read. What was? I can't hear.
Reinvigorating US-1 commercially.
Reinvigorating US-1 commercially. I didn't see that one. Would you like to address that?
Well, listen, the commercial corridor of US-1 is very challenged. Our society has changed. Since I've lived here from 1985, the whole conversation about expanding the corridor on US-1 has failed. We are in the midst of an internet evolution. Everything is changing dramatically. Honestly, I don't know if, whether businesses or residential will be more applicable to US-1. I think we really need to consider that because with this shop online and try before you buy, and I mean, I see packages coming and going all the time. So how is that going to help out the US-1 corridor? It may not. I think we might need to think about some other purpose for US-1 on a residential basis. I think we might need to think about some other purpose for US-1 on a residential basis.
I'm going to be right and direct to this question. Let's keep a village like a village. Thank you.
All right, we are getting ready for the last question for you to consider would be your closing comments. And after that, we have so wonderful amounts of refreshments back there, that you can get to know the candidates even better, and get to know each other, too. Okay? And we're running a few minutes over, but we had some technical difficulties, so that's what we're going to do. And the last question, who would like to go first? That it is, what other information would you like to give to convince the voters to vote for you?
Okay.
Three minutes.
How long?
At least, yeah.
I will tell you that I took this campaign very seriously. We started organizing our strategy back in September. I've answered every email, and I have taken every endorsement opportunity possible. And what I have learned, when you sit down in a room with eight firefighters, or 10 policemen, or 10 realtors, or Chamber of Commerce, they're asking you tough questions, they're asking you questions like, what is gonna happen in the village of North Palm Beach? How is our organization gonna thrive? And just to let you know that I was blown away when they turned around and said, we're gonna endorse you. We believe you're the candidate to take this village to the next year. So to me, I think that when I consider what I've been able to do in the campaign so far, shows you that if those organizations are standing behind my candidacy, you should stand behind my candidacy as well. Thank you very much.
I am a great believer that it is all about having fun in everything that you do. And I am having a terrific fun time in this campaign, and I tell you why. Because, I don't know if you probably have seen my convertible decorated there with flags, and going through the streets of the village of North Palm Beach with a "Abres American", "Natala, Natala", and sometimes I put my wonderful rusty, that is my Virgil Lab as well. And I've engaged with so many people in the community, and I have my telephone number listed in Facebook, in the campaign account, in an Xo, and I have gone to coffees, telephone calls, and I have a whole list of appointments, and Jennifer goes, "Oh, you have a lot of appointments to go." But yes, I do, because this is my connection of connecting and getting to know the village and the concerns, because if I get elected into the council, that's not, that's not going to stop right there for me. I'm going to be, keep doing door-to-door, getting to know you, each resident, by checking your hand, and the business owners as well. Now, I am going, I think that this is an important point here for me, that I will bring and make a difference in the village of North Palm Beach by bringing diversity into the council board, and serving as a mentor to our new generation within our village, and making sure while I am in the council, I will meet and greet every resident. Thank you.
Okay, that ends our formal part, and we're ready for the informal, where we have refreshments back there for everyone. And Kristen, Lisa, welcome, and William in Orlando. Go get to know all of these candidates, because they are going to be your council, they're gonna be in your government. Okay? Thank you.